Okay, everyone's alright. Is this train, is this train?
Man, are you on?
Okay, he was on mute.
I'm muted.
This is train. That's where we're gonna hang. So, of course, we have the regular minutes for January 26th. The work session for January 26th.
I apologize, ma'am. I thought we were not using those mics, but running through here. One more. The mic in front of him, I didn't think were active. I thought we were using these smaller disc-shaped microphones.
I don't know, we don't use this one, I wanted to know.
We do back to the now.
Something broke and they haven't used it.
Yeah, me, okay.
We'll figure it out, but we'll just keep figuring. But anyway, were there any issues with the January 26th regular session work session minutes? Ms. Dorton? No? Mr. Quall?
No.
Mrs. Knight?
No, they weren't updated. The council provided an update.
Correct. Ms. Trainor?
I'm glad.
Presentations. We will have a square end of associate judges and women, and they'll be here later. Then we also have a reasonable number of lawyers to discuss. Chief, I'm in. And meritorious service and investigator work with the portfolio of that. I believe Bow is gonna give us a presentation on the New Year's event that we can make that call.
And before you get into the items that we'll need, though, I just wanna make sure we're clear that because the minutes had an update where we added some language directly out of the recording, that when you make the motion, it will need to say that you're asking for a motion to approve the updated minutes, not just the minute. Like cover it, Stephanie?
Yes. Is that for the 26th?
Would you just update one of the regular minutes?
Yes, yes, sir, just the regular minutes.
Alright. Approval of the memorandum of understanding was flawed.
Chief, Mike Sellar can answer any questions if you have them?
You wanna just update us a little bit on what it is?
You wanna know what it is?
I'll just refer.
Okay, basically what it is, it's cameras that the homeowners association put in Brookwood subdivision, it's at the entrance, and it records every car coming in and out of there. And the MOV just gives us the right to access to cameras to review footage if something happens around, we need to do it.
But it, and don't I understand correctly that this would give us access to the flock camera system beyond Brookwood?
Yes, it will. So we can see other flock cameras, I don't know whether it's anymore in the city that I'm aware of, but other ones throughout the county law.
So, Cracker Brentson and a few other things, catch that guy? Any questions on the MOV related to cameras, Christine?
Does this have anything to do with the, for the school, remember we had school cameras or something?
Red zone.
Red zone?
I think it was the red zone camera, I was gonna ask the same thing.
No, this is totally different, and I don't know if everyone remembers, very recently, we had an incident at Clay State University, right? And it, the flock camera system enabled them to follow the perpetrator down to Macon. So, that was a flock situation, anyone?
Yes, it was. It was followed into the drains, we got a hit on the car down the drain.
So, and so yours, and so if, who can install a flock camera?
Flock does everything, they maintain on everything. We have nothing to do with anything, all they do is let us access the video which they keep on file for, I think they said 90 days. So it's all up to them. I believe Brookwood, she informed me, Anita, that they put them in, I think it's a two-year contract for $2,000, they come out, install, maintain them, and everything.
So every neighborhood in Morrow might choose to install?
It would be a good investment, especially ones that's got one way in, one way out.
So is that for the subdivision to pay for?
Yes, ma'am.
Is any other neighborhood that wants to get them?
We just have to have an agreement in place if we wanna access the footage.
Correct.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Part of, part of flock's sellability is the fact that they've come up with a figure that says 70% of all crime is conducted by using a car. So, it's a big deterrent. And there's more civilian flock cameras than our police-owned flock cameras. So, like the chief said, the ability to log into the civilian aspect of it just exponentially gives more power to the police to look, again, more civilian than our law enforcement, but it's an excellent system.
And their power system's pulled in, like the light poles?
Yeah, severe echo, we can't hear what you're saying.
I was just curious, where they get the power source? You know, camera, basis decision on light?
The flocks that I've looked at personally are solar. I don't know about?
And the one that Brookwood has the solar panels on it.
Something we can access?
It's just a 21st century version of the LPR that we've had existing. It's just a little more high-speed than what we have currently.
So will we need?
I was going to ask, is it possible for us to provide, you know, this resource, informational resource at a minimum, to HOA so that if they're interested, they're aware that there is a service available?
I see where they have access to this one was the HOA for Brookwood.
And a camera?
Correct, yeah. And, and, you know, kind of wanting that all subdivision to have that same opportunity with information at a minimum.
Sure, the beauty with the flock is you can create a geo-fence. You know, if you have north, south, east, and west flocks, you know, you can have four or five in the city, you might not need 50, but the fact is, the car can't leave the city without passing a flock. And it's, it's just, it's a great, and the deal, what you explained, or said about the LaGrange with the shooting, you know, there are flock cameras all up and down the interstates, you just don't see them because we don't know what to look for. The highway patrol uses those to access a lot, but to be able to track that car all the way to LaGrange is a great tool.
I mean, how long has this technology been available?
The technology's been around, flock is just using it to mass-market the civilian aspect. It, it's a great marketing tool. And it's not that, it's not. And I think it's an Atlanta-based company, I think.
To cover our entire city, how many would you recommend that we?
I wouldn't be able, we wouldn't know.
Get the streets?
As we call them out, they look, but per our, you know, our square mileage, mile and a half by two miles, probably wouldn't be a lot.
Well, call them out and ask them to come do an assessment, tell me, how many cameras would we need to have every, all the camp of the city covered?
Right.
At $2,000 for two years, or $2,000 per year?
I, I believe she told me $2,000 was a two-year contract. I confirmed that with her.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can just find out with them.
Other questions? Mr. Quall?
Ms. Trainor?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
So that's $2,000 a year for a contract for one camera, is that what we're understanding?
They've got two cameras, so.
Two cameras.
We'll, we'll find out more about that specifically.
I like the silver.
Okay, and the question, the question that I asked before, even if it's not a measure that the city can undertake overall, is there's an interest for individual subdivisions to have a specifically placed camera? Is it possible for us to, whether it's in a newsletter or reaching out to individual HOA to just provide the information if this is something that they're interested in? Is a layer of, as chief says, civilian cameras that can be utilized?
Absolutely. And this is for tracking cars, not foot tracking?
Yeah.
Yeah, cars, just?
Well, you probably catch foot tracking too, but I think cars are, obviously the one that come in. Excellent, okay. Approval of agreement with the tax commissioner, I think we've had that discussion in the past, and I guess this is the final section. And did it have a billing number in there? Did I miss that? Ms. Redd?
Yes, you missed it. And what is it, Essie, it's the one-time payment of? Yeah, it's the one-time payment of?
$25,000.
And then every year after that?
And then $20,000 each year.
And we also had Chris Pike, is he on tonight? Okay. We had him look at it, and, yeah, actually, I think he was pleased with how low the number was.
And then it's all in one button, and we don't have to have issues, solves it once in a row. I like that. Any issues with the agreement from the tax commissioner, Ms. Dean?
No, no issues.
Mr. Quall?
No issue.
Ms. Knight?
No issues.
And this was background meeting, and this was the one that we talked about for the joint legal representation, and there was a question as to whether I could sign it based on the fact that I was the chairman of the DMO as well as the mayor of the city of Warren. But being I'm no longer the chairman of the DMO, they'll have that problem. So, that should be solved. Any questions relating to legal counsel representing both the DMO and the city of Warren? And I'm assuming this is just the DMO, and we also need the one for the accounting, right?
Well, yeah, the joint representation letter would have to be approved first, before the DMO agreement can be approved. That's, so the DMO agreement includes everything else, this is just the joint rep, legal representation.
Any questions, Mrs. Dean?
He said this was just for the legal rep?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Quall? Ms. Knight?
No questions from me.
Ms. Trainor?
Any questions?
The next one is the, the DMO agreement itself. And since we met last, the DMO, well, first off, we asked everyone from a business community, both the city council, you know, if they had businesses they wanted to invite to that meeting, it was a public meeting. We had 25 or so businesses from the city shore, and pretty good cross-reference from hotels, restaurants, normal businesses. And the DMO board is one of the newer restaurants, Savoy. The new master, Mr. Connor over there, the manager for the jewelry inn, long-time business owner, Ms. Allen, Admiral Hospital, and the chairman is Tim?
Hendricks.
Tim Hendricks from Morrow floors. And at their meeting, once the board was situated, everyone that was in the room is a part of committee, and that will be divided out, so that no one was excluded. And then as that moves forward, but obviously moving forward, we have to have, you know, an agreement with the city, and this is that agreement which you had before you. And questions? Mrs. Dean?
Not here.
Questions to you, Ms. Dean?
She's not here. I am, as I stated, I think the language that has been changed in the document to reflect that the city is receiving optimum benefits from this agreement. I'm satisfied with the agreement going forward.
And just a point of information, the, the city has to work with a designated marketing organization per state law, and we've been collecting those funds. And, you know, this agreement basically kind of fries our expectations of them. They still would have to pass a budget, different things like that, and bring it back to us and a few other things. So, when it gets into the nickels and dimes, that's coming next, and, you know, they still need a bank account, different things along those lines. You know, this, this allows us to move forward. Mr. Quall?
Come up here.
Ms. Knight?
I don't have any questions. I think, you know, through this whole process, the learning curve was steep, but I appreciate that, you know, we have to move forward because we have to have a DMO, and hopefully the language everyone understands is clear. Any other additional points, we would have to work together with the council and communicate them to the DMO so that whether it's an amendment or some changes, we have to work on that as well. But I don't have any questions at this time.
Ms. Trainor?
Yes, I have a question. That I have been asking most of the questions that we have for the council, the rest of council meetings in the world, and the last one is for people that have left them 50% point in the year, or remember? And there are two, I mean, there are other people that have that present, younger people have that present, and have the, ask for the attorney to check on our possibility of having that package, and I will provide that you need those details. So I would like to have, and I want to give language to the agreement to give the actor protection.
If I may, ma'am. And I only ask for this liberty because I was the one that spoke to the attorney directly and commi-- it is legal, but again, the DMO would have to add it to their bylaws, the council cannot add it to their agreement. So it's only legal if the DMO decides they want it that way. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. So yes, other cities can do it if their DMO puts it in their bylaws. So we would have to ask, you know, it would have to be done through the DMO, not the council.
The reason I'm respectful of the client in Oregon is, you know, last week or two weeks ago, we're having discussions, you know, that should have happened, you know, but then the question is, without that supermajority, if you will, it does not. And by taking that into consideration and removing myself from that, it allows the city to move forward. And it's that, that everyone had the ability to invite people to that meeting, could have been anybody, right? They were all business owners for the most part. It's a very diverse group, some long-term businesses, some short-term businesses. Our real tooth in this is the client, and the client controls the curse strings in terms of what we're looking for. So in that budget, when you want enough flexibility, I think you gotta be careful with making it so tight that at some point, you know, it takes us forever to get anything accomplished. So I would encourage you in your budget, that's where you should have your teeth, if that's what you want. But in terms of a group of folks right now, you know, I got a feeling we would be very similar people. And, you know, they're only gonna be there for like a year, that first year's gonna be a little bit of training, right? Just like everywhere else. But now we have 25 business members who took the time out to show up. Let's treat them with the respect I think they deserve, and let's do everything within our power to create a network that works for us. That's, that's what we talked about, being more inclusive, more business-oriented, and remember that's where we make our money. So as a marketing group, I think those things went well. You know, we spent six months to a year to get to this point, and I don't know that it's necessarily my interest at the last minute to continue to leave this stuff on. I would say stand pat on the counter, review your budget and their budget accordingly, and we should just move on from there. Any questions, Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Mr. Quall? Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Trainor?
No questions.
Alright, this is the fun step here, approval of the assistance to the firefighter grant. Chief, do you wanna update us on that a little bit?
Evening, mayor, council members. There's actually three items related to firefighter grants tonight. The first one on the agenda is approval to apply for a new grant. The deadline on that is this Friday, and that's the letter where I talk about the gear washer and the decon washer. Firefighter cancer is one of the leading causes of death in the industry, and we do everything within our power to try to combat that. And one of those things is to clean our gear better, and to clean our air packs and all that stuff better. So, I'm asking for two items, the gear washer and the decon washer for this grant. So 5% match, which if these prices I've quoted in here hold, there won't be more than that, could be a little less, maximum the city would have to pay is $1,699. So that's the first one, and I don't know if the verbiage on the agenda needs to say, no, sorry, getting ahead of myself, that's on the next. Alright, any questions on, on that one?
Any questions, Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Mr. Quall?
No.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Trainor?
No questions.
We got you up, chief, we'll let you keep going.
Alright, and the next one is to approve the vendor for the grant that was awarded to us last year. And again, this is related to cancer. It's for a vehicle exhaust removal system for both fire stations. This is a, a system that has an exhaust fan, it vents out the upper side wall of the fire station. It has a hose that connects to each tailpipe, it's near the truck, cranks up, the fan kicks on and sucks all exhaust out, 100% of exhaust is sucked out of the building, whereas right now, it's just in there with the firefighters. We put it out for bid on December 2nd, and it closed on January 25th, so it's almost eight weeks, it was on GMA and the city website, and we put it in the New Daily. We got a couple of other companies inquire about it, but only one actually submitted a bid, and that's Clean Air Concepts, in the amount of $78,488. The name of the actual device is called Magnet Grip, Clean Air Force, or Clean Air Concepts is the charter company. Chief Moss called some of the references, they're in Roswell Fire Department, Alpharetta Fire Department, and several others around the state. The ones he called are very satisfied with their systems, and so we don't see a need to put it out for another bid. We're, we're satisfied with this one company that we got the bid on. So I'd ask you to approve that.
This was also a female business, small business, that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
American-owned, everything, every part they make is American-owned, American-made.
What was your question about what needed to be added, the magnet grip, ma'am?
Yeah, does the verbiage need to say for the mayor to execute any related documents?
Yes, always, just add that.
Okay.
Alright, any, any additional questions, Ms. Dean?
Yeah, you, you add back, take my comments.
No question? Ms. Knight?
No questions.
And Ms. Trainor? She says some questions, I better do this thing. Thank you, chief.
And would you like me to?
No, because we're still in the review of the meeting agenda. Thank you. This one? Up the box? Yeah, he'll talk about that here in a while.
The, the next thing is, you know, we talked before about the blockchain science, you know, the digital science of the interchange, and we made some slight changes in the art graphic, and made an update on the quality, if you will, and those numbers are in, and I believe it's pretty substantial, that 2001 Art Studio signs as their proposal, recommend that proposal, actually, that might be not correct, but we know it's been updated since then. Any questions about this? I think they told us that they could do this in what, 60 days?
Yes, sir, about, total from start to finish, it said about six weeks. So they're on standby, ready to go.
Correct. Any questions, Ms. Dean?
Little boogie piece that I'm wearing.
No, the, the gear is on.
Yeah, the gear's on.
Gear's on.
Just check. You got a slide.
Mr. Quall?
I'm good.
Ms. Knight?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Trainor?
No questions.
We need garden cross-proposals? We've had that a while, we've been looking forward to it, actually. And we've got three different bids in there on it, I'm just gonna have Billy explain that with us.
Yeah, what we did was, we actually created scope services, put scope services out to three different vendors for pricing. Those came back, we presented the city manager with what we considered to be a snapshot of the three vendors, and we got pretty good pricing on that construction.
And our recommendation on that one is?
Indiana?
Indiana, which is?
And I apologize, one name is missing, it's Design Installations on the third one, the name of the company is all there. Dorothy called that.
Alright, looking forward to getting that one done. Any questions, Ms. Dorton?
As long as it's done, no questions.
The $100 cabinet. No questions?
No questions.
I have a question on this one.
Okay, Mr. Quall?
No questions from you.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Alright, Ms. Trainor, go ahead.
Yeah, on this, there is an electrical work for 4,800, and by the law, we will keep the value up to 2,500, so you have to get the item contract, that's a big problem being verified.
On the licensed electrician, is that what you're asking?
For the whole project, there is also the electrical work in the border, so that by the law, you have to get the license contract, that's a big, very fun.
The project has certain pieces to fence, doesn't require licenses. The exterior water line, that's a good question, I doubted, the small amount of electrical.
There's existing? No, we don't have a lot of electrical in this project. Basically what we're gonna, we have existing lights, and we already have electrical in place. The only thing that we're doing is adding additional outlets, and at, taking the old lights out and putting new lights in. So we're not really doing a lot of extra work other than just adding a few outlets. Then we coming down the columns of the pavings, so we'll have enough power if you eventually wanna have a, some type of event out there, or a meeting of some sort, you need to power up equipment, we wanted to make sure that we had adequate enough outlets in the space.
The state law limit is 2,500, and in the scope of work here, it shows that we already are having 4,800 just electrical, so have the concept of being verified to verify to pay that, I think?
Which, which license you're looking for, ma'am?
Electrical. Electrical? And on other work related to the entire project, if any other project that needs to be, the work to be like that, the for either.
I think the only one with a happy?
Have to verify. Have to verify.
Georgia law should refer to excludes that electrical plumbing, as you say. I'm not saying they don't have to have a license, but not a general contract.
I don't agree with the General Contract Department. On the electrical outlets, depending, we do a number of things our own selves, right?
Yes, sir.
At the owner, we have certain rights, you know, so we look at it and say...
I mean, Billy, could you install a new outlet in the front?
Yes, sir.
And do you have an electrical license?
No, ma'am. No, but that's because you don't make it.
That's my point.
We've got a right.
Exactly.
What about this? What about just having inspection?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
All right. Why don't we just run it through an inspection process? And that, and it's the same inspectors as everybody else, is it? You good with that? That solves the question, Dean? Can we get it inspected?
I'm sorry, it's so low, I couldn't hear from the van.
No, it's just one of those, we think, that's gonna be mostly maintenance. I don't know exactly how much of that's gonna be involved with the material versus the other parts. So all we said was, why don't we just throw in the fact that it's, that electrical gets inspected by our inspectors? That solves that problem, I think.
Well, the thing is that if the law require a license contract, and we hire unlicensed contractors, we encounter outside of permitting, including if something happens, I would tour this property to cover it.
How about you give us an inspection? Point taken, Ms. Tran. Other questions?
I do. What color is the stain?
Concrete.
Concrete. There's a stain.
Is there a stain on the concrete?
There is a stain on the concrete. There is a stain.
Yeah, it's a stain on the concrete.
Does somebody get to pick, who would pick the color? Can Dorothy?
Yeah. Dorothy herself, whomever wishes to put the color.
I've already done it.
If you want to pick it, we can make sure.
Dorothy grew up in the sixties, she picked some odd colors.
It's not inside of the garden. Not my jurisdiction.
But just before they pour the concrete, make sure everybody's happy with it. And just remember, it looks different when it dries, right?
I'm just curious.
Resolution, sorry. Resolution twenty-one dash three, or twenty-five one. And basically, that's where the city puts its, you know, extra cash or spare cash. And you believe you can earn a little bit of money on that.
So this particular resolution is just allowing Chris Pike to have access as your new finance director?
That would be a good idea.
And the Georgia Fund One account is where your lost money is allocated through some state. This would give him access to that account.
Well, and the discussions I had today are... Make sure I have the word right. With the exception of Bank Collins's referencing anything that is a segregated fund, that might not be ours. And that would include anything from municipal court sanitation, splosh, tax, whatever, whatever. We've got a balance of seven one seven million dollars in this bank. Understood? That's not bad. All right. Any questions, Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
And Ms. Tran?
I'm still concerned that we should verify, make sure we have a license contract to do the work.
Point noted, Ms. Tran. Can we get another thing on COVID? Tell me where your vaccines are, Chief.
This is secret code.
I'm gonna defer to Chief Moss on that.
Well, first of all...
You have a secret weapon, I'm trying to see if that's...
Yes.
And it didn't hurt.
Nothing's swallowed the mouth.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Councilman, everyone. So I will say, first of all, it's pretty nice to be popular.
Until you're too popular.
But keep them coming, certainly welcome. Welcome. And last Monday, a week ago, we got delivery, our first delivery of the vaccines, we got two hundred doses. I had requested three hundred, and they, they'll allocate you what they deem necessary at the time. So I got two hundred doses. Today, including this morning, we gave him sixty-one shots today. So the first three days, I'm doing them on Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to eleven. The first three days, I purposely set aside to be a little bit slow to make sure that all the administrative process was correct. They do keep a very tight control on you. And your future allocations depend on the fact that you do your administrative pieces correctly through CDC and DPH. They want to see that you're doing it right before they give you any more. So purposely went a little bit slow to make sure we had our process down. And I've been very pleased with that, and it's gone very well. You know, I made a few little improvements here and there to speed the process up a little bit, but other than that, it's gone very well. We haven't had anyone with any type of adverse reactions and over here, or reports of it so far. So it seems to be going well. Today, I ordered five hundred more doses as we began to expand and move out. I'm gonna start on Thursday, we're moving out to thirty doses a day during our two-hour period. And the next week, I think I'm trying to move to forty, if everything continues to go well and we continue to build it up as we move forward. We're still in Tier One A-plus, which is the healthcare workers, EMS, fire, police department, and over sixty-five, and their caretakers. And that's where we are. So the link has not been published on our website yet, and we haven't needed it. It's out all over the place. I don't, that I haven't seen it, anyway, I haven't seen it got there, but we don't, we don't need to. It's out. And I don't mind it, I don't mind it, because at least with the way it's going, it's seeming to stay pretty tight to our, to our community, which is, which is fine.
And I would like to add, for Moss and Swin and Bow and Denise at the front desk, we have had people that are very generous. And if you have somebody that says, "I couldn't figure it out," or "I couldn't follow the links or instructions," don't let it in there. Tell them to call us. You know, Denise at the front desk, like I said, Bow, Moss, Swin, they've all been very helpful in trying to help people make it through the process. We don't want anybody not getting vaccinated because they couldn't figure out how to make the link work. So again, if you hear feedback from your neighbors or your friends, encourage them to call you and give them my personal cellphone number. And we will make sure that they get the help they need to register.
Yes, right now, I have a hundred and seventy scheduled. And I have a hundred and forty doses on hand still. So that's why I'm trying to keep an eye on it, make sure that I'm able to get the vaccines so I can keep the appointments and roll through them that way. So, yeah, I have had no problem with people signing up. The link is out there in community, which is fine, you know, and so, and it kind of, again, keeps it here. The state asked me if I wanted to put it on the state website, and I declined. Because I just didn't want it to get out that far. It would fill up, and I feel like it would push our own community out at times if it got that big. Because people are searching for anywhere they can find it.
Well, and later, once our group gets in, you know, we've got options. And then that house, will you be doing testing with the Clayton Health Department over at...
Fifty-nine hundred.
And that's a further big operation there.
Yes. Yes, I have a big, I think, handle a large volume.
Although they were probably more vulnerable to the weather than they expected.
Yes.
But that's really good stuff. Ms. Dean?
I think I'm good. You said sixty-five?
Yes, ma'am, sixty-five, and over is this tier.
Mr. Quam?
Any idea when the next batch of vaccine is gonna come in?
You don't know from week to week. If I order on a Tuesday, they should let me know by the next Monday. I've learned a lot about their process here. And so anytime you order one week, they're not gonna make a decision really until at least late Friday. And then on Monday, or your Sunday night or Monday, I will find out if I'm gonna get a shipment that week. So I'm okay for about the next two weeks at least with the number of appointments that I have. And so I would hope that my next shipment will probably be on the twenty-second, that I'll get a bigger shipment. I do have a connection with a lady at the state who has a connection to the allocation team. And so I keep bugging her. I stay in her ear about, you know, us continuing to get the vaccines.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Yeah, really. This is, we can be able to do, do, kind of, thank you.
Ms. Knight, any comment?
I feel the same sentiment as the Councilman's vote. I just greatly appreciate our fire department being able to offer this very important service to the community right now, considering everything's going on. And I always appreciate our fire police department for everything that they do every day.
Ms. Tran?
Bravo to fire department for running this project. It is a, the good service for our community in general, for our city in general, and for the surrounding area as well. Thank you.
And this thing just happened by accident, you know, the leaders at the top had to jump through some hoops and do the things that nobody else has paved the way for, for what they call a non-closed loop system. So this really was close stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say thank you to Chief Swin for trusting in me and giving me the ability to go out and do this, as well as the city manager and council and mayor. You know, this wouldn't happen without the support, and especially with our folks willing to step up and learn all the system and the things that are going, the staff that's doing everything. So I'm just one small link in the chain, and everybody else has pulled together and supported this wholeheartedly. So I appreciate the help that I've gotten, the trust in doing it.
Mayor, before you move on, since the fire is already on the stage, can we go ahead and address the new issue? Yeah, because it works out. Not for the record, just a discussion about these key boxes.
Oh, yeah, please, go ahead. Should've got to, I had, yeah.
I tried.
It's not on, it's not on the current work session, we're adding it. And we'll title it, what, Chief Swin?
That's fine. Residential key boxes.
Residential key boxes.
And this was emailed to everyone late this afternoon.
Yeah, apologize for the delay.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not voting on anything tonight, you're just discussing.
Number thirteen. Number thirteen? Added.
Yes.
So...
It's not for both.
I don't know if anyone saw the email, had a chance to... I'm sorry. I don't know if anyone saw the email, had a chance to read anything. But there's some good information that I sent out. And in a nutshell, we have an elderly population in our community. We have some disabled folks in our community. So the Knox Company, which makes key boxes that are required on all our commercial businesses, also makes a residential key box. The commercial key boxes actually mount to the building, either drill into the brick, block, or wood. These boxes actually hang on the residence door. So we're not marring a house or anything like that. They're real simple to install. The fire department is the only entity that has a key to these boxes. And it's specific to the Moore Fire Department. Clayton County also uses Knox boxes, far as part of us, but their key won't fit our key boxes. Our key doesn't fit theirs. They're secure, it's only apparatus. The officer has to enter a code to release the key. So that makes the box on the house or the business very secure. It cannot be broken into. So I'm proposing that we apply for a grant, it's also through the Assistance to Firefighters grant, but it's specific to fire prevention. Every year, when we put these grants out, they list items that are high priority, medium priority, and low priority. This year, key boxes are high priority. So I think it's something we have a decent chance of getting if we apply for it. It's a five percent match, just like the other AFT grants. And I will present some pricing at the next meeting. I don't have the quote yet, I've asked for it, but I haven't received it yet. So the question now is, how many should we apply for? How many boxes should we put in for? And I'm looking for input from you all, or members of the community, that may know how many people may have a need for something like this. We would likely buy then in lots of thirty-five units, is how they come. So I will, I will look forward to hearing some input from you all as to how many you think we should get. Currently, I think we just went on a call, actually, while I was sitting back here to a house on Skylark, that would go to a lot, and those people would put a key under their mat, because we come so much and they can't... Well, as we all know, that's the first place Burgers are gonna look for a key, right? Because it's a common thing.
And you're going to have that.
Right. So having this key box is much more secure for the resident. And with that, we would need to add additional boxes to our apparatus. Right now, we only have them on both fire engines, and that's it. So if we put them on the homes, the ambulances would need them also, while I also ask for the staff cars to have them. Any questions regarding this?
Ms. Dean?
You said it's mounted on the doorknob?
It hangs over the top of the door. You can see, it hangs, so there's no way anybody can pull that off. And even if they, yeah, even if they do pull it off, they can't access the box, because it has a very secure locking mechanism.
So the fire department would have the key that we open that easily to every box?
Right. And we would develop a guideline on, you know, who would be eligible for these. And my idea would be to loan them out to a resident. It could be a long-term loan, it could be a short-term loan. And then we would track what addresses have these. So for some moves or whatever, we could go collect them back and have it for the next person that might need it.
Then wait, we can track that all? I mean, go down a list of which residents have lived along, evidently, the resident who lived along that, would need this kind of thing?
I mean, we could certainly do some sort of survey, but it would just be up to whether or not the resident would want to respond.
We could put it in the newsletter and do other things like that.
And, you know...
And the ones that you know you're responding to already, those are...
Right. We've been in a fight.
No, we worry about that too much. I mean, it's easier to go in the back window and just rip the door off.
Right.
Well, I think... I think it's a great idea. I have a neighbor that's bedroom, and I have a key at her home. And the police department and the fire department, every time her life alert goes off and they have to dispatch, they have to hunt me down to get the key to get into her home. And I think we've had about five or six instances where I wasn't at home and they couldn't get in. And there were a lot of cases, they were getting ready to knock the door down, and I just happened to arrive in time. So that would relieve me. It would also give the, that, that, that resident of a...
Some relief.
You know, to help them out a great deal. So, and especially if it's a grant, and we only got a five percent match, so...
Yeah, because I would imagine HOAs would be a very good resource to figure out, you know, who in their community would be most eligible.
What do you think, thirty-five? If it comes along with thirty-five, that's a pretty good number.
But two hundred dollars per camera, right?
Per box. That's a rough cost, rough cost.
Taking flubs.
I don't know exactly what that is.
That's not that they're gonna go mad.
No. I mean, initially, I was thinking two lots, but I mean, that's just me thinking. It's an opportunity to get these at a really good price. So that was my initial number.
Any other questions, Ms. Knight?
I don't have any questions. Chief, I may follow up by email to ask. This conversation kind of sparked a question in my mind. I guess I told the story, I didn't have any questions, but I said I had a question. Do we have a registry, or is there an opportunity for residents to reach out to the fire department, air medics, in situations like Mr. Collins, I had mentioned, you know a neighbor, you have a friend that lives down the street, or someone that, in those times where there may be an emergency, you kind of want to give the fire department a heads up? Do we have a registry of that, of that sort?
I don't, I'm not aware of any currently that we're, that have registered with us. We have none out in the past. And Clayton County Dispatch can flag that address and let us know whatever the information is. You can find a key, you know, at this location or whatever. Although, right now, I don't know of any that are flagged like that.
Ms. Knight? Okay. Thank you.
I think certainly if we, if we win this grant, for example, and have a resource to put these boxes in place, we would want some sort of, you know, roster, so we know who... Yeah. Especially if it's on one system.
See, this is, right? It's kind of pretty hard to get, so can we get some amount? I mean, we, it's gonna take us time to go back and do request more, right?
Well, and as like Chief Swin says, next year's round of funding, this may not be the high priority. So this is the optimal year.
Once we get it, we might reserve some.
Yeah. And we would go for the maximum amount, right? Thirty-five thousand is what, is that?
No, no. You missed some zeros there.
Oh, yeah. Thirty-five million. So what would be our highest worth asked? Could we ask for three hundred thousand dollars?
I would agree.
I mean, if we put them on every home?
Obviously, the likelihood of getting it goes way down.
I'm just saying, if nobody else asks for it, it's their high priority.
I think we stay respectful to our needs and realize that other cities have these two counties. But we stay specific to it, saying, whatever's a fair hundred, you've got fifteen hundred dollars here. If we were in that thirty-three range, thirty-five, I think that would be more than enough to have a spare supply, and, you know, even if we lose some over the years, we're still in pretty good shape. Because we might find a secondary use for it. Right now, it might be just, you know, the medical, it might be something, and we're missing it. If we stay true to the grant, it's because we can't hit the...
Right. Ms. Chairman, any questions?
No, no, no questions.
Green light, go.
Couple of questions in here, of course, a couple of things going on. So we had a squash going, we don't have that yet, obviously, squash is an issue we've got. I want to hit these other two. These were, we got the budget calendar, which we're working on.
Yes, sir.
The annual city council planning, we don't have that set yet, right? We still have, obviously, whatever we're going to do. And then, am I missing this correctly? What it says in your I R A meeting, it's...
What I'm asking you is, we had talked about it a little last time, would you want to consider, at the next council meeting, convening at 5:30 and having your U R A meeting, U R A council combination meeting before...
Right. But then the other, would not be on a traditional council meeting, then...
But it would be on the planning and zoning board's traditional line, so next Tuesday.
On the sixteenth.
So their scheduled meeting is the sixteenth. So that's my question, is do you want to go ahead and plan your meeting together on the sixteenth?
I can't make the sixteenth.
Oh, that's right, not the town. When am I going to remember this?
Why don't we do the third and the other? And then, is it fair to say that we've got, that we have them something to do? I mean, I know that the theory is we're canceling meetings, but we should cancel meetings, we should find something.
Oh, no, yeah. I mean, especially now that you have new members, and we want to talk about, like, you know, what, how we want to be more engaging and tour, we can definitely still go for a meeting, it just won't be the planning meeting between the P and Z and the council. So then I would ask, do you want to shoot for the planning and zoning meeting in March?
What's the planning and zoning meeting for council? So then the third Tuesday, so after us. March sixteenth?
If that works for you, yes, sir. It could potentially be at their next scheduled meeting in, after February, which is...
But if they have nothing going on, can we just change their meeting to our meeting, and then catch the two at the same time? Catch it at the same council meeting?
Oh, well, sure.
I thought we'd try that.
And so do you mean that that meeting, too, you would convene at 5:30? So two meetings in a row convening at 5:30, one for the U R A and one for the planning and zoning board?
One would be on...
So what are the dates for those?
The March, so February the twenty-third would be U R A, if that works for you all. And then March the sixteenth would be your, I mean, March the ninth, you're saying?
No, that is on March.
Yeah, that's the second.
The ninth?
Yeah, the ninth would be your planning, you and the P and Z, and that way the mayor and council aren't convening for an additional Tuesday.
Basically, what we're going to do is remember, maybe done for about an hour, and I'll just make sure everybody's reading from the same page.
So are they going to have to have a class or something?
They might, that would be secondary.
I don't think it has to be before their first meeting.
And they're trying to start from April, from what I heard, so, you know, but the idea is still, just be close, and just have a normal conversation. And, you know, the COVID thing still creates problems, because this room isn't really conditioned to, you know, we're not considered to be a boardroom, so, but, you know.
Well, community room is good for...
I'm glad, sir.
We'll just work, because we don't have a real plan B, do we?
I mean, we could probably use the back portion of the room to set up our... Do you want to maybe have it on the Mars or not?
That would be the worst place as well.
We've got plenty of time to advertise it. I can just check with Warren to make sure the schedule...
Just a little bit of gap in front of your drive over, and, you know, give us in. That's a good question. I'll just leave it to the city manager and the staff to get everybody informed and keep that meeting.
Yes, sir.
And again, the main goal is, you know, let's start to have some conversations, and each one of these groups will have different expectations, and I'm sure they'll ask us questions as well. Item eight, you did receive just the updated P and L statement today, I believe. And I think you'd be reasonably pleased with the outcome so far. So take a chance to live with that. And I'll stop right there. Everyone want to grab their cup of coffee, and we'll re- get to that seven. We saw toward the end where it is, this is kind of the early step, you know, and then if you prioritize it, you have to start with someone. It's always in the air, it's hard to see, you know. We're trying to come up with a series of steps that we take, that make it so that we can see it in some type of step, or we're not having some messes every time we're running, where we're in the design space, or, you know, headspace. So what you're seeing here is dark spaces, or something. Today, they've been gone for ten years, is basically a remnant section of conference center, but it's still under, you know, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet of power. And we wanted to kind of, kind of lay it out, we had the architect, I had to put it together. And then you have to start to weed out the things that probably suggest that you're trying to avoid with support. And so I want you to focus on concept scheme one, and the real difference between schemes one, two, and three, is two and three require some type of carbon of the floor from the first floor to the second floor, and then a fairly decent number, and that starts to create, you know, costs that go up a lot. And then you have very, very interesting issues between the bottom floor and the top. From a budgeting standpoint, as well as the ability to facilitate, I'm not sure you're going to be able to get past the first floor, I don't want to be budgeted, but ultimately you're going to be able to grab something that big. So we met with some folks today who actually planned exhibits, that's what they did, and rather go out there and talk to people, we're like, this is your government, conferences, you bring exhibits to cities and towns as a professional, and what type of, you know, spaces do they need? And there's two hit marks, one's fifty thousand square feet, and the other's a hundred. Ideally, we'd like to have a lot more floor. So when we start to look at the space we have there, specifically if you look at the retail in purple, we would like to ask the architect to create some visuals on the outside, and that would be, for those of you who know the existing restaurant space, that portion, the front of the building, obviously, kind of stayed the same, and then wrapping all the way around to the secondary floor. Whether that's ultimately what we build or not, that's a good question, but it gives us the visuals so that our economic development continues to warrant it. And that area that you left has, you know, great visibility, that's basically adjacent to the former front entrance, the satellite mall, there's obviously a lot of cars that parked out there on a regular basis, so that makes it really good sense. So when we see exhibit exhibition A, if the carpet had all, like, the three dots, and it wasn't quite that big, then you take that forward, you know, plus the remaining. And the gentleman that we met with today, you know, seemed to have some pretty good confidence that this is Google. And then we need to kind of take it to the next level, so basically experts themselves walk in your floor, and then try and stay specifically the top floor, or that... So we want to look forward for discussions, so here's, here's where we start. One other thing, the elevators, escalators, up floor, down floor, would probably be discontinued first, or anything second, they've created a lot of the floor spaces, and then you have to remember the elevator shafts and existing times. They're all in there, people just have to be really better equipped with them, so there's lots of ways we can make this work. So this is kind of hot off the presses, if you will, and that'll give the chance to kind of chime in, you know, voice your opinion, and ask you what you think. There is a second floor, maybe some of this, you know, there's a conversation earlier, you know, about where we would sell it all. Some of this, obviously, we pay a reasonable amount for the old, if we now have a tenant, and then, so, yes, that would be something like that, we could work with that tenant and actually enter and sell it all, you know, for a amount of differences over payment. And that would allow us to literally go and get, you know, what I was talking about, if we want a certain store, well, first restaurant, assuming, if we get into that, and after that, you know, you have to be young, you have to be a teenager, and all that, but that's sometimes kind of give you something to show, whether it might not show on the floor, and whether that's a restaurant, a particular retail store, or anything else in my city mall. To do the comparisons, we would need to take a drive around, come to the mall, and that was a sister, I mean, it was managed, Cumberland Mall is satellite mall, it's the exact same thing. But what they do in their areas, they opened it up so that a lot of that retail went out to the exterior of the building, and that would be restaurants and different things to save. And it's a concept similar to that. Now, obviously, we're just picking one building that we own, of whether somebody would do that with, say, maybe a portion of AC Tangle, or a former AC Tangle, or whether we do that with the Sears building, you know. Again, with us, we're going to try to get the count on the, to the civic center over there. But anyway, that being said, you know, it's a good time to have a discussion as to what you see, what you're thinking, and let's see if we can... Because the next level has to be a series of dimensions to win there, that layout has some electrical, obviously, when they go down, you use space. And the column, which is exactly perfect to an existing space for quality. And then there's additional pictures that you'll see in the design. The only thing that I'm misleading about is when you look at these pictures, that ceiling package is, you know, it's pretty high in these pictures. We don't have that kind of system. We've got one-one feet. So when you go in there and you see that one's got a, you know, a couple of coats, a tractor trailer sitting there, that's not, that's not a level. Our ceiling will look like that, but in terms of its physical size, that would not be true. But almost everything else is a little over right-hand side, you know, where we talk about either painting the house, or... Much of that is relevant, and, and, but, 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 um, comments. Let's start with Mr. Porter.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good thing to, to open this up, plan it out, because we already formed the building, and we, we losing money to operate it every year. And it's a good thing, I'm pretty excited to, to, that we are opening it up, planning, see, to see what kind of opportunity that we can bring to this facility, and to make it work. So looking forward to, to work, to make it happen.
You said there was some interest in exhibition?
There is.
So is that looking good, or is it just some, you know...
Well, think of it like this, it's no concern, and let's say you have an implant, and then they should use conferences, and they may be using, that would be the same. So we would operate, our overhead does not change significantly, because you've got Warren already there. So those are, those are costs that you basically can't, you don't release space, it's only something we can't just want. You don't have a lot of tax, right? There's no additional, if you guys have an inter satellite mall, we might have to negotiate that can for you, but right now, you can have nine thousand. If you can get a proper moving forward, and a reasonable can for you to be added to the lease, so let's say you make six hours square foot, we pay three dollars a can.
So what are we looking at to get it?
First thing you do is, you kind of have a layout, and then the bare bones, you're not seeing the conference, you're not seeing that you're in this, but you have to have a designer, and then from there, you cost it out. So this is kind of, we have to have a step, right? I say, even if the bottom floor isn't used by us, because of however we lay out, you want the bottom floor designed, in other words, electrical, plumbing, bathrooms, there's not that much difference between an exhibition space and a retail, the issue is, you're effectively with going to the floor, but a lot of that's those spaces. So as long as your H M Ps are built and designed, you don't necessarily have to build that section out. Lower floors, we're probably going to have to water source, and that would be oiler and shower, and water, and air, or drainage, and it would be costly, but if you want to the top floor, this is physically resorted, that would probably lead very similarly to that, and it's, reasons will be fixed, you'll be able to do a total, but by now, it's, can it be done? Yes. You can come up with a design, and then you try to stay reasonable with these signs, you just, the problems were not, you know, the whole.
So you said access, you said you would remove the escalator?
Yes.
So would there be access from the floor to the...
No, there is, and then at the eleven-hand side, and the right-hand side, the door, you got full stairs on the back of the building, more towards satellite mall interior, is two additional fire exits, one on the left, one on the right, on both floors, upstairs and downstairs. And then remember, if you look at how the, let's assume we exited through existing conference center, you would have two elevators there, and I believe there's a gap, we saw it today, for a flight of stairs there as well. So it would be more than enough to be able to...
So this is not, this won't be opening us up too much?
Not unless we choose.
Okay.
And that would be, which is one of the things we were just saying, if we did, once we have that design, it kind of makes some sense, we'll probably enter into this discussion with someone, just to see what that would take. But we got people with their price, which are very, very pleased, and they're normal, but I feel very comfortable negotiating the lease with a retailer that you want, versus just letting somebody else handle it. This isn't a lot, but we use fifty thousand of it for that, and then, the bottom quarter would get complicated, at sixty thousand feet, you're looking at it, there's no, there's no way you could go all the way to the back wall that you can do much with. But let's say, let's say a D S W was thirty thousand square feet, and then you just kept the remaining section for yourself, for storage, whatever else it is you want, you would still get a fairly comfortable, you know, dollar value on an annual, let's see, taking that. Have you broken up any, that's still more than that. But I think you have to have a plan first, then back into that with a budget, and we know our existing budget coming out of the two thousand eighteen squash, if we allocated roughly nine hundred thousand dollars for this project, and we allocated roughly nine hundred thousand dollars to the Reynolds Road project, we know we might have some other nickels and dimes that might still be available, but if we try to stay within that, as our first floor, you're going to get basically polished floors, electrical, H V A C, that's our, now, remember, we spent five million dollars on the conference center, but that's a nice conference center. So this is mostly polished floor, but we won't have that no matter until we build it, we get a design. And in your design, you can do, you know, partial designs, do some cost estimates, and then this is where, you know, the city council gets to determine a lot of this, and the closer to the ties, the more you get, the less we're going to be able to do. The closer we get to being able to provide space for Warren to be able to lease it out, that makes it a little bit easier for us to be able to accomplish. But, you know, restrooms, electrical, heating and air conditioning is kind of a minimum. The rest of the floor, if you haven't been in there in a while, it's just dust and concrete floor, and the T room is the best example. That is the rest of the building. All we did in the T room was paint the floor and paint some walls, and, you know, we still don't have the electrical, you know, and I would add that, is while we're there, we wanted to go ahead and design out the T room, so that if we ever did get a tenant in there, there's always an expectation that you have an electrical panel, a separated electrical panel, so at least that space, separated H V A C, and then separated electrical, just some, so we'll get some lights and some other things in there soon, but that's not the same as having separated space. And then that would allow you to have potentially two restaurants on the front, around the corner, maybe a little side retailer if you wanted, and a pretty big exhibition hall. And you can see where they're entering the Maro Center, like there, where it says existing Maro Center, you see the dollar doors there, those little slots in the mall already exist, right? And when we put the elevators in, we determined whether we really needed to enter the lower floor, depending on what that use is, there's no requirement, you know, we've got more than enough, like, remember, we've got a service elevator, we've got more than a... There, there's no requirement, you know, we've got more than enough, like remember, we've got a service elevator, we've got more than enough stairs. And right now, it's minimum that I've heard.
Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Smith, comments?
Yes, um, I think I, I'm not familiar with the issues regarding the escalators. But I'm not quite sold on not having escalators. I understand that there's stair access and there's a bank of, of elevators. But I guess on the early side of conversation, ideas in your head, I would want us to finish out this exhibit space. And it, it gave some momentum, but then the constant complaint is, well, you know, you have to wait on the elevator or take the stairs. You, you know, escalators are, are always that easy access. I am familiar with Cumberland Mall and the exhibit spaces there, been there a few times. So I, I would want us to investigate or have a better understanding of what the issue with the escalators are. So that on the front end, we're not kind of creating this finished out space for exhibits, but then it has a disadvantage in the market.
Agreed. Now, the, the existing escalators are shot. So that's about three hundred thousand dollars to replace what you have, so they're not inexpensive. When we look at the big square box, if you will, the existing ones are also in the wrong location. So anytime you have to replace them, it is possible to move them. There's a cost somewhere that gets with it. If the lower floor is not an exhibit space, and it is being, say, as a retail space, then we wouldn't really need the escalators up and down, depending on how it lays itself out. And that's why you see in scheme two and three, she's made many, you know, discussions that says we're grabbing the entire hundred thousand feet. The sweet spot is, is fifty to a hundred, and we basically are all or nothing. I, I got a feeling when we get into our budget, the budget is gonna basically say about the most you can swim with for a pretty long period of time is gonna be about fifty thousand. Now, whether that means wherever you're going, like with the bottom floor, but if the bottom floor is turned into some type of retail, so we can recover some of our costs, some of our, our expenses, we can change that. If you, if you're overly successful, eventually a lease ends, and then you can add it when you need to. But it is a point, and it says, you know, let's just say we just feel like we have to have it, and then we just simply move it. And then the elevators, the existing elevator shafts, there's no elevator in there, well, there is a second elevator on the side. That might be a logical thought, but if we did that as a design.
Yeah, I would, I would want us to, I would want us to flesh it out and investigate that, because, you know, like I said, I, I would hate for us to take the time to. At this point, the spirit of the, the current council is to, you know, hold the property, develop it, make it, you know, usable space. I wouldn't want us to go down, too far down the road and handicap ourselves in the sense that, you know, the opportunity to, to move something or have additional access, you know. You know, let's, let's take a look at all, all of it and, and move forward. I, I wouldn't want it to create a disadvantage, especially if it's a space that becomes popular, but then, you know, you, you get to the point where the feedback is always, but it's that one thing, they've got free parking. But it's that one thing. Let's try to see what we can do so that we have the best flow and access and accessibility from floor to floor, so that it makes sense.
And similar to the original, we, we didn't obviously put in the elevators, we just put in the shafts. In other words, all the structural was put in place, it's right behind the sheetrock, it's, we decided, we decided, now here's, here's what we can swim with. And then, and so that in the original design, you know, where they would be, and they have the choices. And that's ultimately because of expansion choices, or maybe even original choices, if the numbers hold up. But I said, Mr. Smith, comments?
Yeah, we have this, always have this, this property for years, we have not been able to continue to use. Now we've come with having the idea and the potential to have a good, potential plan, the possible financial backup for that. I'm excited, I'm looking forward to that.
One of the other things to remember about this particular property is what you're seeing right there is the building, the current existence building with footprint. In the original agreements with how these buildings were built, you, you have a total footprint. And for whatever reason, this particular building did not use all of theirs. And where they did use it was that's where they put those grass areas, you know, the, the area that's got the hedges and the different things in the walls. That is the true footprint. So this would allow us, as a matter of right, to, to be able to, say in example, have a, a restaurant out front. And literally have seating in that area, so you're not truly sitting on the sidewalk. So there are lots of things, and that would be Maggiannas. Certainly, if you went to kind of the higher end, Phipps, you know, where they see some of that outdoor, so you, you know, you're basically sitting in an area that, that's basically, that you're building a footprint. But what I'd like to do is, and we have some very old plans from like nineteen seventy-five for this space, that the building hasn't changed dramatically. You know, we've got to look at structural, one of the conference one, that might make a good place for, say, an antique car show. But you gotta make sure you've got the car, and then to what limit, right? Obviously, if we pull a fire truck in there or something like that, but we would certainly have the ability. With supply changes in the beginning, the ability to drive right through the back door. And I think they, they said that they felt this might be, you know, tens of strength, let's say a hundred forty P S I or something like that. And that wasn't more than enough to be able to accommodate. Those are the things from a civil engineering standpoint, structural engineering, I'm sorry, that, you know, we would want absolutely confirmed. So we want to get our, our set of plans, but obviously to do all of that, I would hope, the idea would be in the next couple of weeks. To engage some people who could make some of this stuff happen. And I'll be picking, you know, at least one professional engineer company. We certainly want them to coordinate with the exhibit team, because they know where they're supposed to go, and what they need. I plan to build a space that nobody wants. I don't know if it would be possible with two weeks, but two weeks to the next thirty days, you know, we'd like to have that, so these folks can come out and start to draw some stuff. And then this is, this will be a big project, so this will be, first of all, it'll take a while to, to agree or something. We'll have some visuals hopefully soon, that, that is important. And then some cost estimates.
We would be, we would be like the first in this area, right, other than?
Exhibitions?
Yeah. Kind of thing, I mean, a nicer one, you come with the, the bone, I mean, one of those nicer ones.
Well, and there's, there's only so many ways we can, I don't wanna say stop to lose money, but you gotta have something. But we have to figure out, you know, we're already having example, nine thousand dollars, I'll, I'll pick a fight, and try to get out of that, you know. But if, let's, let's just take a, a simple thirty thousand square feet downstairs, and two dollars in camp, you just made all your money back. And you got the retail in one, so sometimes with the fight rate, you might have to choose another one, because it might actually make more sense. So, still does the same thing.
Have to plant us some more trees.
I'm sorry?
So they'll have to plant us some more trees and.
Yeah, and some of the older things that are around, if we pull them up, I mean, we own all kinds of green space, we could, like the holidays and the different things.
All that stuff is dead, around on that other side over there.
This'll take a second, because we, we'll have to have some discussions with Sally.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, show a reason as to why we want to do it. I think we got that right, because there aren't much left to say about it. But we'll still, you know, open that line, but we gotta have some show, you know, the series about it. And then ultimately, the biggest series, you know, obviously, this will be, you know, a construction project, so this is gonna be one of the things. And I think it'll take, you know, three months to bid it out, take six months to build it, at best, you know, so if you're looking at when you have it. If everything went around a reasonable timeframe, eighteen months to the two years before you, there it is. If you got faster than that, that would be the worst, but nothing less is flawed, that's, that's all that matters, if we have to. So just pay attention to it, if there's no objections from the city council, we're gonna move forward to the next stage. Get us this pretty picture, give us some things that we can do with it, and get some experts in here, and see what's gonna, what's gonna happen to take it to that.
I, I think that, that's an excellent use of this space, and it's a diverse opportunity to have something, you know, different.
And running parallel to this, we don't have any, we're not judging about that rental for each space. We've just got, you know, let's give it a little time, once, once the visuals were in place, we could build it tomorrow night. And we don't have to use all the same people all the time. But right now, when they're available, and they're doing, they're pretty much in order for, you know, their cost expected prices. That would be a little bit more challenging, because there's multiple buildings. And we've already seen some of the stuff issued out in terms of, you know, the rental space, but we're still not sure about that big space. But, you know, I can tell you, we, we got some ideas there. Any other questions related to this? All right. Got some marching orders on that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The U R A and the planning exam, we're, we know we're going to do what they'll say. But not a pocket for a lot, so I don't know, it's just anybody, everyone's been doing, you know, it is two, two years, so several years, you know, kind of working for the same. We've got a couple of members of the planning exam, with some that are gonna have to ask some training, some of that training is in, in April or something along those lines. But we gotta have some, they need to take some tours, and you need to look at what the, the current houses, is it being built with the stuff that we want? And really, we're gonna decide if someone's gonna sell it, or if it's gonna be changed. I'm not so much afraid of high density, I'm just afraid of stuff that's trashed out, that's just gonna destroy the city. But there's things out there that are being built with very high, you know. And the reason it's so expensive is because land prices in a lot of other places are five times wells. So you took that land price down, and just look, look at the new prices. I, I think it's gonna get pretty close to a, to a warner, and it's gonna be in that three hundred grand to start. Let's see what we can do to get some of that. Now, it's not gonna be eighty, eighty homes, big cities, there's no land for that. But if we can start to get somebody to build a few, like, a little small track, whether it's one wheel, or whether it's, it's something that's available. We gotta start, we remember that right, that residential. We, we really need to start looking at breaking in some of our other shopping centers. And the reason that not have that, that's a good use of a shopping center, so it's like they were the, the shopping center. She bought it, and she just wants the cash flow from it, that's the dividend, she's not gonna spend a nickel on it, do very little to make it, right? Then I come in, and let's say I wanna put my restaurant in your, your shopping center, it's gonna cost me five hundred thousand dollars to build it out. But you don't wanna lose any of your current revenue, so you're saying, I'll give it to you six dollars a foot, but you guys are at the five hundred thousand. A ten year lease, I'm, I'm building that in. But most people are looking at it and saying, why would I, why would I spend a five hundred thousand when you're building? And that's the catch point, too, that we're in, whether it's the new space or the old space. Now, let's take a little different from the city's Marshall Street, for example. So you got thirty-five thousand square feet, or if you sell that thirty-five thousand square feet to retail, he spends two million dollars building it out. Now they go, they're willing to spend the money, I said, plus it's at a price that a, a small business can afford. They can't afford forty million dollar shops, they can't afford five million dollar shops, you know. But they can afford five hundred, seven hundred thousand easy. Though it may be a business investment, and all of them's part of it, they get their investments. That idea's been around for a while, it's never really been incorporated, and I can give you an example of that idea. The idea is, you have the city as well as the planning exam board we're comfortable with. Because that's what we're great at, it's gonna connect it to your, to your shops. And then that's just one piece, you see, now, break it down to the point where no return, I'm sure about that. But get them comfortable with it, and show them that it's also bigger than it. And that's a bigger shopping center, and then it's a condo of some sort. There's some really cool stuff, that kind of plan, and the building now is nice. And we know there's some people out there shopping private property for whatever that, that we'll get. And I'm not sure the Z O K is strong enough to get the quality you want. So before that shows up in front of us, it'd be a really good idea for us to change the K to the point where almost anything that they could build, it is going to fit what you want. And that department, and then it's gonna be what, why they need to see, right? They need to want that property, and they know it, and then they can use this balance and others to take pictures, they can catalog it. We, we're the government, exactly, we get into the government, that's what they do. And we have access under Freedom of Information Act as well, all the records from outside of the government, to be able to figure out what they did. But it takes time to do that. So rather than assume we're gonna be able to do this as a day, you know, if the planning exam board is really gonna be monthly anyway, let's use that time. And A, it's something working together as a coalition group, B, it's starting to get us up to speed, you got plenty of time to do it. Right now, there's a lot of pending, which, you know, give us a hard time. And then take that same thing with the U R A, and I'll just give you an example. We have a number of properties the U R A owns, but they're not doing much work, because they don't have the money, and then we do. But if they bought seven acres of property on the back of Dallas as well. With the theory that if they bought that property, nobody would build it. And that depends, you know, the, the people in the back are burrowing, they're not burrowing.
Argen.
Argen, and York is the street right there. But if you bet on the back of York, that back of York's got the creek behind it, and it almost gets straighter. So you would look at it and say, well, I don't want that, then I'm not gonna kill him. So then, we're, we're in the city, we basically have, have control of that property. But what if we do change your mind, and what if we do want to let somebody go, a transactional, or an office complex, or whatever? Totally defeating the purpose that it was purchased for in the first place, but we're gonna give you a difference, city council. And maybe we don't have somebody who lives in our neighborhood, and maybe we don't get it. Well, if you're gonna get into something, you also have to make sure that you get out of it, you know, with a similar intent. So let's assume it may be the right decision, and they purchased with the right reasons, then just wholly entitled as a owner. You know, we, we had a gentleman come in here earlier, and we, who wants to build some high tech city on the property behind Scottville, for example. That's, that's a great idea, no, it's a terrible idea, you know, that, that's not why I just purchased. Just because you can, and then you should, but there'll be a day we won't be, and somebody else might not feel the same way. In which case, we, we did something that we didn't completely, and that's the, the game plan here, is to say, there's some ideas we have, we need to do. So using the U R A, using Addison Parkway, we, we have them with Baptist Church, for example, because they have a little small cemetery, probably Addison Cemetery National. And the theory was, if we expanded that cemetery a little bit, and the cemetery plots sell for a pre-decent amount of money. So the city could recover its costs by using just a portion of that property for an expanded cemetery. There's a, there's a pipe up, either for water or for the back, preserve that in perpetuity, if you will, as, as an easement, or maybe even. We gotta eventually figure out how we're gonna take the pass system on that side of town, it's not fair for it to just be on this side. We have plenty of property on that side, we need a, we need a layout where it's gonna be.
Will they ever consider or, uh, and through to, now, over that?
Ernest Duffy's original, ours come down, that is a parkway tied into Duffy Drive, that was original. I got a feeling we'd be shut down, you know, by the people who live over there, if they'd rather take that.
Well, Lucy.
First thing we'll do is go right to Mr. Drummond's yard.
Yeah, there you go.
But if, if you look at how that property over there then ties into the metaphor of the park property we had, and then you did a transition. As a design, we're, we're not there yet, but we're close, why not? There's no reason not to lay down. And does that mean you go to the end of Argen and then come up that property? That's pretty logical. But over there, where we've got the small park on, where there's a little, little cut, we go right over to the park on Duffy Drive. And then we don't have quite as far to put it right, and we've got more time on the park. Maybe you add the Meadowport Park on, on the big track, right, the third, the big track, which might make more sense, it could be my last, my last upset. And then eventually, we can tie it to, you know, Miss Waters, we got a pretty nice two tracks actually, it's almost seven acres by itself. At some point, someone might decide to build some houses, and, you know, I don't know that. And, you know, I don't know that entering on Lake Harbor right there, the curve is the highest, you know. What would be the best place in the world for anybody to enter? Odds are we would probably enter on the end of, of Argen. And if we maintain that piece, that big, about a two acre, around that piece, then that would give you the control of it. And then negotiate it. So on that one, there was also a discussion with a, a local minister. And they were buying, um, plots for their community, if you will. And you know, kind of some projections that said, he felt that he needed three hundred additional plots, uh, plots. And the last time they made a purchase was up at the, uh, the cemetery of nineteen forty-one. And they paid about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. Now, if you go and re-open the Addison Cemetery, there's not going to be a lot of taxes, about seven fifty. And the difference is it went on, on nineteen forty-one, you can't even, you know, right? You just get the old grass, I think, and put that in there and blow the grass. Over at Addison, you, you can have a little, some of our community really wants, you know, kind of a lineman, worker, your family and different things like that. So you get the things that you would only get to do. But, but I think, and this is all paraphrased, but I think their discussion could be happy that gentlemen decided, we could take a portion of this property and sell it to you. And we'll bring it to you in a grass format, and there's your three hundred. You know, and that was important enough, I think, to give us a little bit extra, uh, pay ourselves back for the money you got in your investment. And then, then you completely protected the property as it was kind of laid out. You left yourself the room on the back of Argen. But again, this is just taking a planning forward. You have to have, you know, the, the U R A, I was here just a minute ago. But those discussions now need to be had. Because we sit there and, uh, what, what makes sense to take it forward without changing the original intent for one law? So we bought it to protect the property, protect the entity facility. And then what are we going to do? So then they own some properties that are truly ready for development. Stuff over at University, for example. It's, it's a city. Right now it's cheaper to rent some of the existing trades that we have. But in the near future, somebody's going to have to build some stuff from the ground up. And that's going to be, you know, two time multiplier at least, uh, to get it. So we have to have a, a, you know, and how much does that is a good apartment, on screen, apartment, maybe, uh, also a little bit. We need that to go with it. So we need to be, be better.
The, um, the, John, for the household there, um, fifty-nine thirty-six? That's one on, um, University Boulevard in thirty-four, remember? Isn't that, some of that property back there still the county property on that, on that line?
They, they own the power line, even the beside that, they have a good apartment here. And they own the corner where the, uh, the bar doors are.
Right, right. But in back of the house.
They own the small, that's what they own, the only thing they do, we would, if the apartment here, they could build them. We own the apartment you can build in. Then they own.
Can we, uh, schmooze with the county and maybe? Talk about that little.
Like, that Turner was there this week and, uh, you know, she should be coming around.
We need those bushes cut again. Well, we'll be leaving, so it doesn't matter.
No, that was a right answer. Really, she's got some troubles. But the point you never made is, is not just to sit together and take, you know, open time off the clock. Is to engage them, right? They're there for a reason, they want to help. And we want to give them that help, which is saying, go, go wait for us. Right, there's the things they should be doing in the planning process. And then six months from now, let's meet again. Or if you've got a project that's locked down, let's meet again tomorrow. And show us what you got, what is it that you meant? Let them do some of the footwork and the other things that's necessary. And then you've got to pull these things forward. But I think this answers your question, Renee was asking several times, uh, including the example. Is now we have this, right, first person we have for a long, every time. Now we have it. But we have to manage, manage our relationships, manage our expectations. And we have to manage. And failing to do that, you know, we're not going to be able to, anything can probably suspend it. And do you not make the relationships as big as you are? And then one day something will show up, that's going to be matters. And then that's going to be like, we're going to start from scratch. Let's not learn on stuff that's critical. Let's learn on stuff that we need any. And by the time I give you this, it's only the first time I did it, hopefully it'll be in January eleventh. Comments? Ms. Renning?
Uh, no comments. Um, I think we're going overall just, you know, in a, in a positive direction. And so, you know, we just want to maintain that momentum in the increments possible. Based on the perspective of where we are today, that's the most important thing. Where we are today, moving forward, the plans that we are communicating amongst each other, the conversations to build that collaboration so that things get done. You know, I'm, I'm appreciative of where we are today.
Ms. Turner?
No comments.
Ms. Quan?
I'm pretty excited, you know, we, you know, we finally have our financial, um, foundation. You know, we have, we have some, uh, stuff that we, uh, like I said, we have some solid ground that we can stand on and, um, get a city moving forward to, from different projects. Looking forward to, uh, to work as a group to, uh, to put it out nicely. Yeah. See you tomorrow. We, uh, we, uh, we do have potential, from what I'm seeing. And, um, looking forward to be a part of it, to, uh, to, uh, to put it forward.
Now we know Popeye's turned in a permit today. And we know that that was Hank Aaron's surprise.
They, they were in contact with us today that they were telling us to expect the plans, but we didn't actually get the plans today. And yes, Hank Aaron's son is now our client for that property.
So that's what we, uh, the level of grandstanding was pretty much, uh, so.
Keep it covered.
We have a, we have a city app. Do you have a, uh, city app?
Yes, uh, the city app will, uh, launch fully on, uh, April twentieth. So they already moved forward developing it because, uh, they were in the tryout phase. We kind of gave them some feedbacks of what they need and, uh, yeah, they, uh, we paid them for the final phase. So April twentieth is when the app go live.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, business newsletter update up there. Let me start over.
Oh, we started it, but it's not ready for the public.
Let's, let's give that, that maybe, uh, you know, all the people that just showed up there, a lot of here time, you know.
You're talking about U R A planning or something?
This guy's would be the D M O.
Oh, the D M O, yes, yes.
Can I interject?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can, can I interject very quickly? Um, is it possible for council to receive, it doesn't have to be any long communication, but, um, business openings? Is it, or is it centralized information, roll that? Or, I, I know we will all give, uh, attend every grand opening and every open up business, you know, is going to be elevated to the level of, and, um, there's been a couple of businesses just right down the road, you know, the things that, um, just want to kind of, ask to be aware of, you know, things that.
We got it, yes, yes.
Break it up, I think we know what you're asking, but it's, we're, we're here about to say.
Yeah, yeah.
There.
Yeah, that, that would, that would be very helpful.
Yep, we've got our information as well. And you're going to need it anyway, because there's no way you're going to keep trying to actually people who don't have a better, you know, system. And, uh, what's happening, where we're going, uh, opening to businesses, projections, things like that. Same thing with the permits. And we know somebody's got some of that already, in terms of what, you know, permits are pending and different things.
Yeah, um, I, I would like to add to that, things that are coming, you know, down the, the pipe here, you know, just a heads up. So that we won't be, you know, like a deer in headlights when you give it to us. Let us, you know, kind of let us know, give us some, um, like a little headway on it. So that information that we might need, we can get, get it to you before, you know, we have to go into discussion or something like that. Just a little heads up.
We, we had a good discussion today with, uh, George Power, uh, we got a new area manager, John Chris Willie. And we, uh, I had some good discussions about, uh, the new restaurant lights on. And he's probably here. So he, not specifically tomorrow, but he's been serving lately in, in, and, uh, I thought that kind of worked very well. And usually they're here for at least a few years, so we can create that relationship.
That's the moral road. No, is that A T and T, uh, George Power?
Uh, A T, uh, uh.
You talk about, you know, I said about the A T and T doing work. No, this is just our, our regional rep, it was once Darrell Round, Lisa Smith, Audrey King, and now it is Chris Willie.
Okay, okay.
And then I, I mentioned earlier about, um, pass system for the east side, you know, when we get into the planning session, which is going to be rather important. Definitely want that. And, you know, supporting maps, we, we, we can draw behind what we think, if we can, if we're worried for that, it's caused a lot of damage. And we can back that up later with somebody with, you know, the ability to do some basics. I know on the Meadowbrook side of that, that creek in there is rather wack.
I moved to the west side to get to the path, now we're going to build on the east side, so now I can live on both sides.
That's the game. So let's see what else we got. Even though you're working on, you don't know somebody that is, or, uh, Mick, with some parks, you know, that they're working on. Getting this bridge up, we got there, still working. Talking about the diet space, um, for those who haven't seen, can you imagine vegetation being mowed down behind and sound like? That's, that was pretty tremendous. It's, it's worth a drive. You know, the video does, does give you a complete justice. Uh, complete justice is when you sit over there at the old town system, look up the state and more of the forest. It is now back to being where it's supposed to be. And if you just get a little luck and that deed on, I think it looks through when we want it to. Um, sound like Paul is getting invisible for the first time littered. And then this is probably nineteen seventy-five. So that's, you know, for those of you who want to do the relationship building, I've been building about a lot over there. One is we've got to give him some that nobody gets. And all we're asking is, you know, do you mind if somebody knows your tattoo? And I hope the answer is go ahead. Because that's, that visibility is giving that, right? It's priceless, you can't, you can't even put it without, and it's priceless that anybody can go against. So they'll like your system, um, in terms of that.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are we with the Lake Harbor project sidewalk?
You have a good question.
Uh, the city attorney has already sent out, uh, letters to all of the residents that, uh, that will be affected. Uh, I had a good conversation with, uh, Jan and Jack Masters, who, they own two pieces of property right on, uh, Lake Harbor. Um, they were very appreciative and very willing and, uh, they are definitely gung ho about getting a sidewalk here. Their only concern was, uh, when we put the sidewalk in, will we have curbing so that water won't just flood back into their yards? Um, based on the prints and based on the design of the, that, uh, Mark Whitley and team put together, yes, there are curves there. So that's going to not allow that problem.
And it's going to be drainage on that side?
It's not going to be drainage, but what happens is, uh, when they put that sidewalk in, to be consistent with the existing curves. They're going to add, add curves. And then they're going to do the A D A cuts into the, the sidewalk, which you actually have to add curve to that too. So I think we'll be fine. But, uh, I think we're very, very close to, to getting started. There's still probably a couple of people that haven't responded that have gotten the letters. I'm just waiting for those responses to come back and we'll go.
What about the existing pass system in terms of that project? Where is, is that still designed?
Yeah, that's, that's in the queue.
How about the, uh, pass system on Westwood Way and connect it in last little piece there, that one forty-seven projection?
Yeah, so we, um, in fact, I think it may have been that I, this, earlier this afternoon, between all my emails, we, we have the bid documents. That now we have to publish and get them out to bid and receive the bids. But, um, Mark Whitley put those bid documents together. Um, and so we just need to get that published and leave it open for, you know, probably forty-five days and see who responds.
So we, so we got, we got some river connection coming out of, um, vegetation. Whatever we did out there, uh, out there, like I said, with some of the vegetation coming in. It may not be a bad idea, it's surprising, like some of the trouble is.
I'm already working on it, sir, can I have it?
Uh, spring the newsletter?
While you're.
You're going to be getting that?
The residential newsletter, um, I don't know that they've started yet.
Well, you know, our setback was, is, is all of you got the notification, Karina, and what, it's going, she's finishing her quarantine.
Okay.
So other than that, I mean.
So we're, we're going to have the, the residential newsletter and the business. And the business newsletter will, what, what, quarterly? I mean, how often is it going to?
Well, I think the intention is to send them out together. So it'll be, right? But we don't intend to send out fewer business newsletters than we do residential.
No, no, but it is two separate newsletters.
Yes, yes. But I think you asked.
Is it quarterly or what?
It's quarterly residential, I don't know if the business has to be quarterly, it could be three times a year or something like that.
So we can do finally for, for commercial and residential quarterly?
Somewhere in there, if they get something in their hands, and then we need them at least twice a year for a bigger group. Because that's your next step from your D M Os to pull a bigger group in. And we've had some good conversations, but to be able to have some things to show, um, what we said, uh, everybody that was in that group, twenty-five people, what we said, uh, it's a lot of national campaigns as you can, but those national markets aren't going to let you take that brand and put it on your site, for example. But others will. And the idea was everybody that was in that meeting, you know, you're first to be able to start to advertise on, on the markets that we'll have. And then there was a, a second discussion, uh, and it don't happen yet, but, you know, if, if you're really not getting into marketing, think of it as, okay, we give a business grant, it's a relatively small amount of money, it's not, that's before. But the other thing we make money and we can pay these cats is we got to make more money. And that means they have to make more money, otherwise you increase the tax or whatever. The idea is, is to make it so to work. Marketing is usually how a business improves everyone. They market it better, they do the different things. And we're hoping then, if we throw the kitchen sink in, you know, that their losses for, for this next year, you won't be as bad. So it's not like we're throwing it open and hoping we get rich. We're just hoping we go well. There's a number of businesses out there, if you sell Town Center Mall, Town Center Mall, when it needs to foreclose. That's not a big amount of mall. Simon Properties is like rank number one, number two as far as, uh, property management, kind of threes in, in, in the country. And one of the higher ones in the world. So you get a mall that had two hundred thousand dollars worth of debt on it from the Dutch bank, and they foreclosed it. And they were willing to turn a loose to anybody that would bid a hundred and thirty million dollars. And there's no business. And they're remarkably better stage than we are. So that makes you very nervous about, you know. The only reason why I'm going to let that go is somebody would pay it, and we're not talking a few dollars thing. So somebody with a seven million dollars in a blink, and, and that's a problem. I just let you know that our businesses aren't going well, but a lot of that's coming back with things like that. So we, we need to preserve what we have and that marketing managed.
So, one more question. What, what is our relationship right now with, uh, the Clayton Chamber?
I would, I would say is probably a good answer. We know the people, but as far as them really engage us, we're, in a half a year. But we're, we're not competing with them. We're, we're just trying to market to our own people, right? Our own businesses, so the more people we can bring into town that'll shop for whatever reason, the better off everybody is specifically costs. And whether that's taking on our ass, and I could pick on a winter new year or something. You know, we wanted to do more participation with the businesses. We actually had discussions about how successful, well, we, we probably pushed the envelope as to how much we thought we could get. And in a pandemic, when people were going to turn, losing a lot of resources, we didn't get very far. We would probably be that, that, um, that was happening, playing down at the bottom. But an example would be the, the fence is a little. But an example would be the, the fences that are, you know, there's got to be at least two advertising opportunities out there, or we can rotate or nobody would have an issue. And just say, okay, we got twenty-five businesses that are engaged right now, maybe more in the future. Yeah, and I'm not saying it's at the funeral or something like that. I'm just saying let's, let's take advantage of what we have. And say, if you buy a banner, then you hang it, that's a burger case. And then next, who's next, who's next? So there's lots of ways we can advertise our own businesses without looking like, you know, some of the areas that are falling apart. Does that make sense? Um, and we just need to take that forward and have some control. So we have two locations that we're willing to try. And this is what the banner signs is, and it has to be quality, we need the quality, the standard, we need a couple of printers, and then who's up first? Well, now we got maybe a little bit happier to do. Um, same with the marketing that we got out from, you know, we've been doing that for a little bit. So that's what's going to make these folks happy, is really leaving what we're saying. And then how can they help us and kind of take advantage and make it bigger? I'll make my money, I think it'll make it better.
Is there any, any movement on the private partner shit with the Morris Center, I mean, the tourist center?
Uh-uh.
Or, or do they not, is it tourist center?
And then I think we had another person in there today, um, reduces, uh, having a foul around what happens.
Yeah.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not one of those, it's kind of a little bit tricky because of the limited, uh, I can say it. And, uh, the, um, contamination and stuff, uh, on the gas station.
But I.
But, but, you know, I think it's the.
It's, it's clear by now.
Well, if, if they.
I, really, we.
But, I mean, people are afraid to, to invest in together, it's a big investment on, on, on restrapping.
They're putting restrat on the ground, on high record, and then you call the dirt off. And bringing new dirt to the top. But those are, those are, once we find a person, it's not to say we haven't had some interest, but we haven't had an interest from anybody that you would agree to. In other words, um, what was like a health clinic?
In fact, we had two, two clinics, one of the.
And one was like a secondhand retail. Oh, come on. You know, the, the building out of the back. So just taking anything that doesn't mean anything else.
A salon, that was another.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's how much we want to do.
And the, and the property right across the street, what, what's happening with that?
He must have slipped it for a million dollars.
What? Would you say no?
Probably across the street, oh, maybe.
That one up, it used to be four hundred and eighty-five thousand, I thought that was us.
He's, uh, oh, nine hundred and seven thousand. He thinks he's got to go along, he really is.
Oh, the, uh, the, uh, the gas station?
Yeah. So I just look at it, and say, I think he's going to be staying there for a little while.
Yeah. Wow.
Forty years, a long time.
Because, you know, that would be in that.
Yeah.
At some point, he's going to, he's going to realize something, we all remember that. The hotel next door is in great relationships with the IHOP restaurant.
Right, yeah.
And they're financed by the same person.
Yeah, yeah.
And he would have to go through their parking lot to really accomplish much of anything. And they have no reason to help.
They don't get along, do they?
So if they wait long enough, he'll come down to some reality, just, just he's not there yet.
Million dollars, really?
So that gives you, um, for either the planning session or some of these owners, you know, we, we talked about Christmas decorations that are pretty thin out there. You know, we need, we need to have something that we can show some people when we get into a planning room, show us a book to ask what's going on. Um, if we go through the DMO, make sure that they see the same things, we can come up with some agreements.
So what are we calling the district? Is that, is that?
The district, I think it's the answer that everybody has, but.
Is it?
We don't know. Um, whatever sticks, but we, we know it'll change.
Well, I like, I like the name.
What is change, I love the district. I love it. I, I hope that's what y'all settle on.
The district.
That's fine. Just, just whatever we finally do, let's put some graphic to go with it.
Yes.
It's got a visual that makes people happy and, and run with it. Um, we know it'll change, so I don't have a problem with that. The, uh, the veteran statue out front, we got that there. They're going to do a pretty decent little event there on February twenty-seventh. They're going to do a, a little dry run on the twentieth for those. Just get that on your calendar. And then you saw the, uh, the concert they're going to hold, um, if you remember the name of the band, I don't.
So called Soul Cartel.
Soul Cartel. Um, so that'll be a good, you know, invite thing. Uh, where are we with our little food trucks now? Um, once Dorothy lose her plants out of there.
Well, move me.
I'm working on it.
Take me out. We're ready.
Yeah, working on, um, some sign, design, start putting it up to let people know that we're coming, or when it would.
I mean, the, the, you don't think the garden club's going to get uncomfortable that we're advertising for what's after them, right? Y'all are all pretty good and solid, and.
Listen, listen. We're good. Y'all are, y'all are. Strange bird.
She has done one of my recent, that fence getting fat tattered.
Like getting knocked in the head. Just lock us, but, just lock us in, lock us in. Give us some water and some plantar boxes, we're good. And keep the deer out, Bill. You know, the other one, the grill.
Okay.
I think.
I feel you.
They told me today, they're, they're, uh, just like what they're doing with the red house, they're now making some discussions with some folks on the green house, um, to come up with some numbers. And obviously it's smaller, but, you know, that should be something that's coming soon. Um, a couple of events that are potential out there, St. Patrick's Day, Sanco de Mayo. Um, the, the Juneteenth, seems like there's lots of discussions about that. And then we start to get back into the same thing we've done before, there's Freedom Fest, say Halloween, Christmas. Um, neighboring cookouts. So we're not quite ready for the neighboring cookouts yet, just simply because of COVID. Um, let's see what else we got. Uh, easements, I saw Falcon Design out there the other day. Did we have any type of time line where they go?
Well, I mean, their biggest, their biggest problem is getting into those county offices. Um, because they just, those final documents are going to come, um, and they just haven't got an appointment yet to get in there and get, it's the surveys, I think, we finished, and we've gotten the, you know, they sent us the invoices for the whole work they've accomplished.
Yes.
Uh, we exchanged emails with Falcon and Warren Tillery, remember? He is with Smith, Smith Welch, Web and White, he's representing us in that matter, in that property planning process. So it's just, we're waiting on that, uh, county access to the county records for the rights.
So that's good. Um, dark space, we're talking about that. Uh, the other one's, it's kind of Chris Long Term. Aren't we meeting with those builders sometime in the next week or so, two weeks?
Twenty-third, uh, they put in a couple of offers with the, um, those on Lee Street.
You talking about Alan Robert, the, the home builder?
Yeah, Robert, Robert now, yes. Um, they said they still waiting on, they don't, they, the people didn't say no yet, but they didn't say yes either, so waiting on that offer.
It was offer number one.
Yeah.
And, and that's a good example, the, the two corners right there on Lee Street, under your zoning map are commercial. So Dorothy wanted.
And where, Lee Street and what?
Uh, Twilight Trail.
Okay.
So Dorothy wanted to go there tomorrow and build a retail store. They can literally get the permit as a matter of right, good news, only already allowed it. And Mrs. Jeffries would probably have a meltdown.
Okay.
But that's one of the ideas of a risk, is to say, we know the property under rights, that person really does want to sell because he's tired of paying the taxes and everything. And that one's got some challenges. So what if we could get two residential lots out of it and then build two residential homes? That would certainly be better than, you know, a retail store or something we didn't want. Um, and that's what they're looking at. And that builder could build.
I mean, you don't have to rezoom or anything for that.
Well, usually if you downzone, downzone basically says we'll go from the president to the coroner. Um, but we wanted to think about it. In other words, what, what do you have? And, you know, they've shown us some of the, the properties that they built, and, and they're, they're more traditional. They're, they're going to be a, um, a Central Park Loop property, a Foxcroft property. Um, it probably won't be as nice as, you know, some of the later developments that you saw at Brookwood. You know, they were building stuff that, you know, probably three fifty, something like that.
Children's Way.
Children's Way. That's what we're hoping for, you know, but somewhere in there, you kind of know you're probably going to be, you know, it may look that good, we'll see. And, and I think they got to decide, and right now the demand in the city is off the charts. You know, there's like four houses for sale in the whole city. So all he wants to do is test the market. If the market's there, they'll build in the market. Um, and, and most of that would be, you know, what you call the upgrades on the inside, right? Somebody goes in and says, you know, hey, I'll, you know, do hardwood floors, I'll, you know, do nice upgraded kitchens. And that's where the rest of that money gets spent. So, you know, we know that they're out there and that those are good things.
Is there any action on, it used to be Magnolia Apartments or whatever, whatever they are now? There, it's in, unincorporated, on, on the, uh, car.
No, you come out.
You know, that, that.
Just outside the city on the left.
Yeah, on the left. Before you get to the.
The church.
Stonecrest or not, whatever, the Senior Care Center, right? Just before you get, uh, whatever they are now.
Yeah.
Well, now, now here's, you know, as we get in, because you're talking Lake Harbor on the left, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we, we know there's at least two subdivisions that have a challenge with their neighbors that require some fence.
Mm-hmm.
But, but this is kind of, the irony is, you know, it's, it's like Dorothy, I need a fence. Well, the city of Mars not anywhere, like, not even close. You know, so as an HOA, it's like, we don't own any property there, and they don't either. But you at least know the five neighbors that they're walking through the yard on.
Yeah.
So we, we have to have some agreements before we can help. And, and that just says, I'm, I'm comfortable, we can figure out how to do it. But it's like, nobody, everyone wants to talk about it, nobody wants to complete it.
Yeah.
And, and I'd say the same thing on Harbin Terrace. Harbin Terrace is, now, that wouldn't necessarily be a chain link fence. That would probably be an added section of the wooden fence that they didn't feel like goes all the way up against the, uh, the library. There's some gap in there of some sort. But just to give you an idea on that one, this is where it's fun. We get them to do a Zoom call with us, which is fine. And then you say, okay, I think I can help, right? So let's reach out to the HOA members, but the HOA company, the management company won't release us, who the members are. Isn't that crazy? And you're like, you know.
Well, I, I.
That's true fact, right?
It's not even just the company, it's just even trying to get anybody to identify who, who, who is it?
We saw them on Zoom, but that's it.
And you think, okay, well, I'll follow up and I'll be able to get your contact information, but.
And so.
We have to be able to. We said fire department over there, police department over there could get.
Folks at Harbin Terrace would give us a call, you know, seven seven zero nine six one four zero zero.
Four zero four, three one two, one seven, um, you know, seriously, call us.
Um, because, because it, it's tricky. It's not as simple as, you know, just try to check somewhere. This is tricky, this is going to take, you know, a little bit of common sense working together, but it's doable. And, and that's the part that's important is to say, you know, I'm comfortable, we can solve this problem together. And I'm also comfortable that if we don't work together, we can talk about it a year from now too. And it still won't be a coincidence. And at some point, something bad's going to happen, and they're going to blame us one more time. And that's, this is not true. Um, but.
And then, you know, of course, that particular subdivision comes, you know, is right up against the city limits. So I think everybody makes the assumption the city owns some portion of land beyond, and we can, but we don't. I mean, the property line.
The two subdivisions, they, they meet, right?
And that's right. And so that we don't have any access to make some more.
Then the apartment complex is like the other portion.
And I, I saw the thing there on St. Patrick's Day, you know, but we're going to start calling this the district. We might as well start later on as the district.
On it. Yeah, so just to recap, as the mayor just said, February seventh, seventh, twenty-seventh, here with the War Memorial. February twenty-eighth at the Marlow Center with the Black History Concert. March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, May fifth, Sanco de Mayo, both of those will be in the district. And then June twelfth is Juneteenth at Freedom Fest Field. And then Freedom Fest is always the Saturday before July fourth. So, I mean, like bam, 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 all of a sudden, we got like a, a whole lot of events coming up that we're pretty excited about, so.
Any comments for the cause? We'll call it a day. Ms. Dean?
No, I'm exhausted.
Ms. Tring? Ms. Knight?
No comment.
No comment.